Called meeting to order at four thirty. We have the regular meeting minutes of February twentieth, twenty four. When you were there, but zoom phone. I'll second that, yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose, so move. So release. Have a lot of discussions lately. I'll just give you a quick update. Had a meeting with Loadstar, the company that will be doing the, hopefully will be doing the project. And our attorney and Noel Lafayette from S H R Energy trying to get the lease tightened up and done with. One thing that probably the last thing that's come up with this whole thing is some environmental concerns. Seeing how it's adjacent to our current, our capped landfill. There's some concern about pollution in the ground. If it gets disturbed during the construction of this project, who's liable for it? Is there any liability? Is there any concern? So after our meeting, I think it was last Thursday, we decided to reach out to Kerma, our insurance company, and get ahold of someone there, whether it's risk management, loss control, I'm not sure who, to ask them the questions about this. Is it really a concern? If soil gets disturbed, it doesn't go off site, is there a claim? Who would be against that type of thing? So I did contact, contact Karma last week. I got a phone call yesterday from Steve NATO, who's our liaison with Karma. And he's asking those questions to the person that would have, hopefully have the answers to them. So that's kind of our latest and hopefully last hiccup to get this project rolling. It would still take a good year. I think I told you the last time about the supply issues with transformers and switchgear and such. So I'm hoping fairly soon we'll have a lease we can bring forward to the board selection and everyone is supposed to see it.
The last time we talked, you were going to check with the tax.
Yeah, tax.
Equipment.
Yeah, I spoke with Betsy and she's done this in a few other towns, specifically Derby, where they come up with a tax agreement.
Right.
That kind of stabilizes the taxes throughout the, all the term of the lease. So that way the financing company knows what it's going to be throughout the whole term. They're comfortable with that. It's kind of a payment in lieu of taxes. You keep it within their rent fee that they're going to pay us. As far as the equipment goes, that starts to depreciate almost immediately. So it's not like you're building value in your equipment over the years. It's actually going down over the years. And Betsy felt comfortable with that. It can be written right into the lease. Norfolk just did this. We got a copy of their lease. And it's, we're kind of probably going to make it pretty much the same way Norfolk has done it.
Okay.
That way it'll take care of the taxes within agreement, within the lease. Yeah, it's been a lot of work, a lot of meetings. Brings us two months in house lease. What we have is we had some comments from Morris Cares. They were looked at by our attorneys and by Karma Insurance Company. Some were incorporated in this, some were not. For, you know, reasons from the attorney and insurance company. This is what we've come up with. I know there are several online here from Morris Cares. There are some questions I got today from Renee, I believe it is, Renee Daly. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Yes, good afternoon. Renee Daly, I'm the Secretary of Morris Cares Inc. Ms. Wilson is also on the line and she is the President of Morris Cares.
Yeah.
We're, we're happy to take those questions here or give you a chance to review and discuss in another form, whatever your preference is.
Well, I ran those questions by the attorney and he felt there should not be any changes. I think you did have something you need to run by your insurance company. A third question?
Well, yes, so we have primarily the three questions. The first, in the last draft that we received of the lease, there was additional requirements regarding the insurance policy. Ms. Wilson and I can't answer those at this time. We will have to check with the insurer. So we wanted to just update you on that. On the first question, I just like, would like to revisit that if you have a moment and happy to take up directly with the attorney if, if that would be preferable. We just, I, I think there's a conflicting provision. And we just want to make sure we understand who's doing what around the property, what we're responsible for and what the town is doing. And so the town, there's a provision in the lease which has been in the first draft that we received, that the town was going to plow the driveway. And Morris Cares Inc. was going to take care of the stairs and the ramp. In the version that we just got back a few days ago, there is additional language that said that Morris Cares Inc., the food pantry, would be responsible for de-icing and anti-slip fall treatment of the driveway. That sort of seemed counter to us that the town was plowing. So we thought that was confusing and would like that language deleted. So we're just clear on who's doing what.
Yeah, it's, to me, it's quite clear. The town would plow the driveway, which is basically plow the driveway. As you know, after like the sun comes out and freezes up again, the town's not going to go back and go sanding. That'll be up to Morris Cares. You're utilizing the driveway, bringing in your clientele. And we feel you should be responsible to making sure that's a safe area.
If, if the town, I believe there's some unused portion of the premises as well. If the town permits others to use that unused portion, that was our concern as well, that we didn't want to be responsible for a piece of the property or maintenance of the property that others were using that were not coming for, to Morris Cares to make use of the food pantry.
Yeah, I mean, I really feel you need to be responsible for maintaining that driveway as far as slip and fall.
Okay, well, we have a, well, that's an open issue for us that was not presented to the board. I think it is a bit conflicting, so we'll have to take that back to our board. I don't know if Ms. Wilson wants to chime in on anything more on that issue. Okay. The other, the other issue which was raised in the email has to do with making sure that the food pantry doesn't take on any liability to the, to the town if the, if the town is sued by a third party for something the town did. Right? We, we want to, we are certainly responsible for things that we do. And if the third party brings an action against us or the town and it was the food pantry's responsibility, that's on us, that's on our insurance. The other comment we raised was to make sure that if the, a third party sued the town, that the food pantry wasn't responsible if we did not cause or have a responsibility to do something with regard to the reason that the third party sued the town. There was some clarification language that we raised that we would like the, the town and the attorney to consider to clarify that.
Yeah, and I ran that past our attorney. He felt that a Karma reviewed and approved the subject, approved subject to the changes they made in the last draft. That was something our insurance company has in there.
I apologize. I lost your sound for a minute. Could you just repeat that? My apologies.
Yeah, this is language that our insurance company wanted in there.
Sure. And I'm not taking out any of the language. We were just proposing to clarify that we weren't taking on any responsibility to reimburse for a town obligation. We're certainly keeping the responsibility and ensuring our obligations.
Well, if you have some language that you would propose, I can run it past the insurance company.
Perfect. I will send that through again. Those were the, we did just get the full comparison this morning. We'll take another look, but I think those were our primary questions at this time.
Okay, so I guess we'll wait.
Let me ask you a couple of questions now. When, when the town comes through, obviously they'll sand the park a lot. Like you said, if there's snow melted. Is that a continuation of the town hall where they could just go, we're not saying they have to maintain a hundred percent, but if they make a path through with a sand truck.
Oh, yeah.
That, that would kind of cover.
As they're plowing the sand, but we want to make sure that Morris Cares is going to respond, be responsible to make sure that remains slip and trip free for their clientele.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, you can't, we can't be going back there every day to put down sand.
Oh, no, we understand that. But if they can make a, an extension of the driveway goes through and sand, and yes, we would have to make sure if there's spots there that we would have to cover.
Yeah. We don't have the time and resources to keep going back, you know, on a daily basis to inspect it to make sure it's.
I understand that. And you have to understand that that building will not be open every day of the week.
Right.
And in a snowstorm or in climate weather, obviously that will be closed because we won't be able to get our volunteers to get there.
Yeah.
You know, and, and you have to remember, this is a, an organization that's based with all volunteers. And it's going to be a service to the town. And hopefully if it grows, we can work to get it even better. So whatever we can do to help, I mean, we'd be grateful.
Okay.
If I may comment one more, make one more comment. If we could clarify that the Morris Cares is responsible for the de-icing when we are open and when we are basically soliciting and advertising for clients. I, I think that would be something that we could present to our board. I think the concern is since we do not, we're not open like a regular business, we are a nonprofit food pantry that will be open select hours. We didn't want to be responsible for de-icing, you know, in the middle of the night or something when we're not open.
I would have a little issue with that. I would, I would say anytime it's being utilized by Morris Cares as far as, because you'll have volunteers there outside of days you're open.
That's a fair point. That's fine. Yeah.
You know, because obviously you're not scared of a weekend, a month, for one day a month.
If, if that, if we could, if we could limit that to when exactly, not just when we are open to the public, but when we are there. I think that that would be fine. We were concerned about if we are not operating at the premise, either because there's no volunteers there or it's closed or that we do not want to take on responsibility for de-icing. We are a bunch of volunteers at a food pantry.
And again, any, any language that's going to have to get approved by Karma. So we'll see what they say.
We will provide some additional language for consideration on that point as well.
Okay. Anything else? We'll get that out.
The only other thing that, you know, if, we have to look at this whole big picture because you know, we're saying Morris cares, but what if somebody just comes into a driveway for the library and drops books off and they fall? The town is liable for that?
I would believe the town would be. It's nothing to do with the operation of by Morris Cares on premises. Yeah. It'd be like me walking over there and go check the heat, you know, or the oil in the tank.
Right.
Ordinance update. We.
So let's go back. So what we're going to do is they're going to make, they're going to send you some changes.
Right.
You're going to keep forward for them to
to Karma.
Yeah. To make sure it's okay with them.
Yep, and through ride back again.
And through ride back, okay. And then you'll have a revised, whatever change was made.
Yeah, it seems like one made, you know, one small step from point.
Yeah.
Ordinance update. Well, we saw the response from our attorney on the noise ordinance.
Right.
And to pretty much send it back to the ordinance committee, they were, I guess, unable to meet Monday? I don't believe they met Monday. No, I think they.
I don't know. I can't, I can't.
Yeah, I was, I was there yesterday.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we're going to have to wait until their next meeting for them to take a look at that and see what they want to do.
The other, the other thing that ordinance, now I remember something that Planning and Zoning was looking at that. And they had that girl, Janelle.
Janelle Mullen, yeah.
Yes. So I'm wondering if it should go to Planning and Zoning instead of the ordinance committee and have Janelle look into it a little deeper because they would have more of a background than I think our ordinance committee would.
Yeah, I mean, I think what it really comes down to is going the way that our ordinance committee came up with, which is kind of broad and vague on purpose, or going the very specific way of like what Bethlehem has and what seems to be approved by D E P now. I think D E P kind of has to be asked, you know, would this be acceptable at all? You know, what was proposed? Or do we really have to go where you're going with decimal ratings and meters and enforcement and all that such?
Yeah, I, I would like to see a, a joint meeting, to be honest with you, with, with planning and zoning and the ordinance. Because Janelle has quite some background on this. And the other thing I'd be curious to see is Bethlehem passed that ordinance, how do they plan to enforce it?
It's all part of it, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have ordinance in, in our own town that we don't enforce. We can, we have trouble in. I, I don't want to say, I don't want to say we can't enforce it. We have trouble enforcing it.
Correct, yeah. And do you want another unenforceable?
Right, do we want to put something out there that we're not going to enforce?
Right.
So I, I would like to check with, and I don't know how you check with Bethlehem to see how, how are they going to enforce a complaint?
Yeah, I'll reach out to Steve Sordi in Bethlehem.
Because I think that would be a, a big factor.
Yeah, what are, how are they doing it? What are they doing?
Or do they just put an ordinance together and hope that they don't have to deal with it?
Because they do rule by ordinance there.
Yes.
Versus.
Because they have no one zoning.
Right. Yeah, so we'll have to see about that. I think outside the noise one, I think Dave Harry is working with our attorney on the emergency management ones. We did have a meeting with USA Hall and recycling to talk about the issues that they see in other towns with ordinances and everything. So we sent them a copy of what we're proposing. They're going to kind of go through it. They said they probably have some ideas from other towns. And they did say we're the last town that is looking to make commercial businesses have dumpsters.
Right.
They're like, you're, you're like, you're it. You're ours. You're, you're the last one. So obviously it's a important thing to get done for us, but we just want to make sure we're going to do it right.
Especially if it were July.
It would be good to have them before July.
And you're only going to. We'll have to have it done before July.
You're only going to see tipping fees go up and up. So there's some towns that are coming off the MIRA organization that could see tipping fees up to $200 a ton. So that'd be like over double what we're paying now. So. So we'll, we'll make sure we get that ready for a town meeting. Yeah. And speaking of ordinance committee, we have a wonderful volunteer here, Eddie Jacob. Moved to town fairly recently.
About four years ago.
Well, that's very recent. And you're interested to be on the ordinance committee still or?
Yes, very much so. You'll have me.
Definitely, definitely. There isn't at least one opening, I believe, right now. And it's from March first, twenty four to February twenty eighth, twenty six.
Great.
Does that sound good? All right.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
If we have somebody that's willing to volunteer, we're welcoming you aboard.
Yeah, we really appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, so move. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out today.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Whereabouts do you live?
I'm two eighty-three Thompson. So right behind, right before the event.
That's right, Chapman's old.
Yes, yeah. My, my wife is from Lethfield originally. So when we were dating about ten years ago, just fell in love with the area.
Good, great. Glad you came up here.
Yeah, me too.
Other appointments, we have Dorothy DeLuca for Senior Center Commission, March twenty third, twenty four to March twenty second, twenty seven. And we're not doing both. We have Harriet Ellis for Senior Center, March twenty third, twenty four to March twenty second, twenty seven. Both members are currently on the commission, Senior Center Commission right now. There's a motion to appoint both.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Tax collectors report is in there, I believe. Moving fairly well. We can add it to, I don't really have much else for correspondence. We could go to public comment or if you'd like to add the budget review to the agenda, we could kind of go through the budget with what I have right now.
Yeah, I'll make more to add the budget under, you want to do it under eight?
Nine eight.
Sign it.
If there's any comment, we can take it then.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment? See anyone on, online? Okay, we'll go through, let me bring up the budget. Like I said, we don't have all the numbers yet. So. All right, how do I shrink this screen to fit the whole page? That's close enough. Capital non recurring. It's kind of been a goal to get that to $500,000. For many years, we're way below that and not keeping up with our, you know, funds we need to invest in our bridges and roads and equipment. I did put in 500,000 this year. We had 400 last year. It is a number that Board of Finance will probably, you know, adjust a bit depending on how much fund balance they'd like to use and how much capital non recurring on, on a sign they may use. So that's kind of a temporary number anyways. It's really up to the Board of Finance to determine how much they want to put in, in that line item. Lake Authority, they're not currently in need of any funds. So we dropped them down with placeholder fifty, fifty dollars. Contingency, again, that's a Board of Finance number to adjust as they see fit. Sandy Beach Commission, I haven't really received an actual request, an amount in a request from them. Every year they say, you know, keep it the same as last year. I'd like for them to come up with a, a, a number for us. The four oh one A contribution will be adjusted slightly down, I believe, I think down to five thousand. I want to check with Rick on that. The pension went up slightly for M F C. The pension for the volunteer fire department did drop. This is a recommendation from the actuary.
Did that drop because of people passing?
I think costs.
Oh.
Yeah, because we're, we're all set on the funding.
Yeah, I thought we were, yeah.
But we just had that yearly actuary cost, which we're trying to lower as much as possible. The Morris employee pension remains the same economic development. We dropped to fifty because there has been very little activity there and they have not used any money in for many years. Weed control, again, this is something to think, for us to think about. I, I put in our five thousand then. Just because costs for that have been going up and they actually, they're trying a different technique this time around, like an early treatment to keep the blue green algae from forming in the spring. So it's an expensive one, but it hopefully reduce doing two treatments of copper sulfate later in the year, which has been less and less effective on combating the blue green algae. So hopefully by not doing those two treatments and doing this one in early, that it'll be more effective and hopefully some cost savings there. I don't really have a firm number yet from region twenty. But I did put in approximately seven hundred, oh, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars less than last year. Could be more. Depends what they come up with. Board of Finance, I just threw in some numbers for them. I did not receive anything back. They'll come up with their own budget. All right. Who's a whiz at Excel? Okay, Mr. Page, is it a matter of a plus or minus someplace?
Yeah, hit the negative button. There you go, right there.
Oh, thank you. You're such a whiz. Rocket science here. They haven't used the clerk in years. They don't use really anything for supplies. They have not done an annual report in years. The audit is something they, they're going to have to look at to make sure it's not going up. I imagine it might. And leave a notice for them. Board of Assessing Appeals is the same at a thousand. We do have two appeals right now currently, which won't be part of this next fiscal year. I don't anticipate any appeals next year. So it's just really a placeholder at a thousand, just in case. Fire Department. Mostly any increases he had was due to costing, increased costs of purchasing, whether, whether it's gear, radios, pagers, supplies. Building maintenance is going up a little bit. We're trying to maintain that water system there, so we're going to add in a service that'll come in once every six months and maintain the filters in that system. Let's see what else. Truck maintenance up slightly. Again, just increased costs. And we're still waiting on the insurance number, but we feel eighteen thousand should be fine. Any questions on?
No increase in fire there?
I thought he had one. Now, let me double check that number. I think he did go up slightly.
It should go up.
We did. He's been really good at getting the grants.
Yeah.
And he got a grant to buy a lot of new turnout gear. So I think everyone is within the ten year range for turnout gear right now. Obviously, we're going to have some coming up in the next five years or four years to get replaced.
And physicals, is that because of new members?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They've got, they've been running a fire one, fire two courses there and they've generated a number of new, new members, just, and young ones too.
That's good.
Really nice. A lot of these younger ones as well have gone on to get their E M T. So they're working at L V A as well. Anything else on?
Is the new fire truck coming in this year?
Yeah, it's coming in. It kind of changes. I saw pictures of the chassis, I think, before June.
Yeah, my, the reason asking is would that lower our maintenance on some of the vehicles for the new truck coming in?
It may. I mean, you still have to do your annual inspections and maintenance all, you know, obviously you won't have to put tires on it for eight years probably. But yeah, that, that's a good point. Get an engine five hours.
I mean, how much could it go down? I mean.
That, that might go down and the rest might go up.
Right.
You know, but we're not getting any younger.
Is new equipment just kind of a contingency? Because it seems they've outlined. Is new equipment just kind of a contingency? Because it seems they've outlined everything else very specifically.
And this is, we'll be good with Rob coming in to speak to it, but it's really replacement of shovels, brooms, anything that's on the, or on the engines, small equipment, chainsaw, ice auger, you name it.
Okay.
But I'll have a whole list for you next week.
Okay, great.
Fire marshal did not change. Beach and Rec went up due to summer salaries went up due to increased minimum wage. Sanitation went up just to the increased cost of renting the dumpster there. Alarm security, that's just an increase in the ma- maintenance fee for covering the alarm system there. Right. Do you see any other increases?
Travel.
Travel up slightly.
They really didn't go up that much compared to last year.
Went from 53,998 to 54,750. Fortunately, they do generate revenue. Let's help offset it. Have anything else? I know I'm going fast here.
What's turf maintenance?
Turf maintenance is it's not the mowing of the grass. It's all the fertilization weed control, pest control.
And she feels she has enough in there for concerts?
Yeah, although.
Because last year she was running a little tight, I think she said.
And this year, we won't have the one on Labor Day weekend because that was sponsored by the Reading Room Committee. And the trust that funds the Reading Room Committee decided they will not fund the concert.
Oh.
They won't allow the Reading Room to fund the concert. Which I don't care. I think she's going to make do with what she has. They have a great concert series.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the townspeople enjoy it. Something for them to come out and it's something that the county can do for the residents. And anytime you can do that, I mean, I don't think anybody would question a little increase in that.
It's a thought. She may, I don't think she knew about the reading room issue when she came out with this budget.
Well, maybe that's something you could check with her.
Definitely check with her.
To have to boost it up, I'd rather boost that up and.
I think we were paying close to two, well, the reading room was paying close to 2,000 for a band.
Okay.
Yeah, because they had some large bands, Eight to the Bar. Can't remember the other one. Library. I spoke with Elena. We went over a few things. They had some other increases. She went back to the board. For some reason. I don't see. Our increase here. There should be an increase in the library digital resources. I believe she was looking at $4,400 for that.
Yeah, it just says 4,000.
Does it say 4,000?
Yeah, click on one of them and then arrow to the right. Just click on anything. There you go. And now arrow to the right.
Gosh.
And one more. It's blank. So that's where you're.
4,000. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm way off here. Yeah, $4,000. And they're just seeing an increase in the online or subscription services available online. Kind of more popular. I think the rest. Oh yeah, 12,000 for books and magazines. That was it for library. P and Z, some minor changes. Percy statue, all things on commission members are required to take a certain amount of training throughout the year. So there was an increase in travel. Increase in planning zone supplies, actually no, travel. I talked to him about supplies. He brought it back down to 300. Mileage went up to 600. Town planner up to 8,000. And.
I don't see travel.
Mileage.
Oh, is that mileage?
Yeah, went up to 600. There may be some members of the commission traveling to go, you know, to some of these training seminars. I did ask them to try to take advantage of all the either online or the free training that's available. The Northwest COG does, I think, once a month or quarterly, Thursday, training. But really not, not a huge increase here. Tax collector, yeah, she didn't. She remained. She went down in mileage. It was an increase, increasing wages. Now, she felt comfortable with her computer support, which has been going up quite a bit, some of these departments. So her mileage went down.
Yes.
And she did with that. Everything else, any redesign?
Yeah.
Treasurer, his big thing was the, is the cost of the system that he utilizes for the financial, financials. And that was only $427 more. The payroll service fees that go up, that's ADP. And wages per contract. Anything on him? For treasurer. Port of Health, the BNA, they're out of Winston. He sent a request, I think for $250, but we do also see some expenses through the years when there is a visit to a Morris resident and the nurse will go and do an initial, I guess, analysis and we end up paying for that, or it doesn't happen a lot. Inland weapons, I don't think that's changed in years. We're still working volunteers as far as the weapons enforcement officers. County Trolley is here every Wednesday morning to deal with wetlands applications. Mike Doyle, of course, is, you know, does quite a bit of work for that commission as a volunteer. And it's working. We do hope someday to find a weapons enforcement officer or combination zoning enforcement, wetlands enforcement officer. Would be nice. Or shared service through the COG. We're looking into that. CBA, I think they went up in legal notices. And that was it. I have a boring budget. Nancy Skil is the chairperson of that commission now. Town clerk. I don't believe she had any changes other than wages.
And the computer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, another one where, where the, the fees for the different companies that she uses for her systems. You'll see that in the next one, which is the assessor. She added education. Her assistant is currently taking courses to get certified, which also increases mileage because she has to travel to do the certification. And then the computers expense went up significantly from 13,750 to 17,920. It's just all stuff that's kind of out of your control.
That's the software program?
Yeah, it's a vision appraisal. That's the one system that maintains the online field cards and does our brown and blank. And then there's Q, who's the other? QDS is the other one that ties the assessor with the tax collector. All the taxation information. And it does also does, I think the vision one does her webpage as well, because there's a separate webpage for the assessor to access all the different information.
It's coming up every year.
Yeah, and you know, at some point, I think towns are going to start saying, there's got to be another alternative out there to
Yeah.
To do, to go with. Community hall. Cleaning service up slightly. Fuel. We feel we can stay the same. We have propane here. Oh, contract services up slightly. That's to maintain the access control here and monitor our alarm system, fire system. Internet, we should be fine with. And the well testing went up a little bit. $20. Salaries, we follow the union contract for both the first selectman and administrative assistant. Didn't know if you wanted to do anything about the selectman salary, you know. 2,500 per year. Supplies, we stayed the same. File server maintenance going up slightly on that. We are moving to cloud base for our server. We won't have anything in the building any, any longer. Going, getting more secure. As far as cybersecurity, it's an ongoing process. They're currently working on it right now. They're updating all of our computers. We're going to have a, you know, what do they call that? The two? You have to log in and also we're going to have the little
Question.
Thing on the side for the finger to tap. Make sure it's your little key.
The fingerprint.
Yeah. On that text.
So that's for the computers that are here, but for the software program like that, you know, you came with the assessor and all, is that separate line of security with that? Or is it still within what we need to pay for?
All the security is all right here. That is just their access to the information that the other companies supply. Vision, QDS. I keep saying QDS, isn't it QDS?
I think so.
Yeah.
QDS. Okay. I hear you. You, you know what I, what I meant?
Yeah, I mean, I have a little note, you know, that 13,000 is the server maintenance, which will, we won't have the servers anymore, but the offsite backups. All our mail archiving, we archive, archive all the mail, it doesn't go away. Antivirus, patch management, the web filter and the email spam filters, which is a real pain. And they're expecting an email. It hasn't arrived for 24 to 48 hours there.
Yeah.
What page? We talked to him. He said he's not going up. Legal notices slightly. Slight increase with Council of Small Towns membership. Northwest COG went up $4. Oh, yeah, you'll see a big jump down here. And election salaries.
I saw a large jump, big jump.
And that's all the early voting, which begins in April on the primaries. This is the best number that they could come up with. And we did get a slightly over $10,000 from the state to help cover some of these expenses. But it's kind of an unknown and I know a lot of small towns, it was a big thing that came up is the state is requiring a moderator to be there during all this early voting. And you can't find a moderator to do normal voting. It's very difficult these days. So we're hoping the Secretary of State, they're going to adjust this as they go along and realize that a small town like Morris with 1,800 voters, that'd be 100% of the voters. We may not need everything that was required in the bill and hopefully they adjust it a little bit smaller for us.
Now, when they had the early voting, are you actually going to have to set up machines?
I think there will be a machine ready, a tabulator.
Yes.
Yeah, and there's, there should be at least two people in the room, as far as registrars, hoping not a moderator. There should be one of each, Republican and Democrat.
Now, have we reached out to try to get a moderator in our town?
There are some people that are interested in taking the course.
Yeah.
So Carrie and Larry are working on that. But your registrar can't be a moderator.
Because I mean, I want, I mean, Joanne was a moderator of them. And I don't know.
There was somebody else that was Rose Buckens.
Did she finally go through with it or not?
Yeah, I think she's done with it though.
Okay. I knew there was somebody else, but I couldn't think of who it was.
It would be nice, I mean, to at least have someone in town that could do that. Especially the way things have changed with voting. It'll be interesting season. This is going to be a real test on this early voting for small towns and for big towns and cities. So that's quite a jump, but they feel that should cover them. Slightly up in supplies for elections. I have on mine, I have the health insurance in yellow. We're still waiting. Region six in the consortium went out to bid for healthcare. The winning bidder was Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. We still may see a slight increase in that number, that premium number. I don't think it's going to be a large increase, but I believe we're going to have a better plan. At least a company that more physicians will accept the coverage. Connect Care is a little tough. Chore service, you'll see a significant jump there. That one quite a bit, too. Yeah, and that was, a lot of things have changed with chore. The Whiskfield Hills Tour Service was kind of absorbed by the Salisbury. was kind of absorbed by the Salisbury tour service. And when they really looked at the numbers, they realized, here we go. That we were kind of underpaying for the service. And their amount requests for, they go by the size of the town, like for Morris, it's five thousand, Washington's five thousand. Goshen, they have like one person that utilizes the service, looking twenty-five hundred dollars. Same with Warren and Roxbury's five thousand, Whitsfield's ten thousand. So I guess we're gonna have to kind of wait and see how it works out with joining up with the Salisbury chore service and how it works for Morris and see if it's worthwhile. There is a kind of a number of clients, service hours, and how much we've been paying, and then you can see what they're requesting here as well.
So did chore use up all their money?
There, I believe there was sixty thousand dollars that was transferred over to Salisbury at the end of the, or will be transferred over to Salisbury at the end of the service.
So Salisbury handling the whole, they're handling the whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I did read an article in the paper about that.
Yeah. It just got to be, we're kind of bleeding money into Whitsfield chore service and and then we lost, you know, Sally Earl.
Lost Sally, who really ran it.
Right, she was a big part of that. Definitely. She really was good at getting grants.
Is Phil still on that? He wasn't.
He was, no longer, yeah.
So we lost two people that were really, they were both really involved with that.
Very involved.
Yeah. And that's the problem, as, as, as we get older, we don't have younger people coming in to step up for.
Yeah, yeah, except now we have Eddie.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but that's just in general with everything going on.
Well, definitely, yeah. I mean, we'll see that on some of our boards and commissions. And I can get more information on chore service for you. I think we're gonna have to revisit and just make sure it's a worthwhile endeavor. I think it's worthwhile. I mean, what they do is
It is.
Financially, doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
I kind of ran the numbers with what they gave me and, you know, for me, if it allows someone to stay in their house a couple of years longer, that's kind of a good investment. It's great for the community.
Yeah, absolutely. But definitely the math doesn't really
Yeah.
Work well. So that would need to be looked at.
Right, well, that was always a concern with chore, where, whether it can't utilize enough for the town people.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that number, well, one, I hope that the number of people utilizing the service in Morris increases because I think there are people out there that are not taking advantage of the service that should. And two, I think, hopefully with the efficiency of the Salisbury chore service, they can work those numbers and find out exactly what it costs for the town of Morris in the future.
See, that's, that's the problem with services in town. People don't utilize, like you're a food bank. Or it is food bank. We know there's people out there that need
Yeah.
Assistance, but for some reason, they don't take advantage of it.
Northwest Transit, yeah, we have a bus in town one, every Monday now, and they get two, two riders. It's a lot.
Yeah, but that's awful expected for
It does add up.
For two, for two riders, yeah.
Health water testing, just the cost of materials went up for that. Tardary Board helped up slightly. And I did have a question here. We've been funding Susan B. Anthony at two thousand, and that's what they're requesting, same with Fish. Greenwood's did ask for seventy-five hundred dollars. That's their ask, you know, we can continue, we're not required. We can continue giving five thousand, we can adjust it to any number.
I think we, didn't we give that money on ARPA last year or something? Yeah.
That's why, I don't think we've written that check yet.
Wow.
So I wanted to keep them at five and they get the money from ARPA as well, where I should be good.
And then the other thing was in the newspaper about the money that came back from all the nips.
Yeah.
Was all the towns up here. Now, that money was supposed to go to these foundations.
Well, you can utilize it for a lot, like Watertown bought a sweeper.
Right.
We helped pay for Sweeper here in Morris.
Okay.
With that money, it's like fifteen hundred dollars, I think.
Yeah, you said we didn't get much from it.
No, well, I mean, it's significant. It's a lot of nips.
It is, yeah.
But the opioid monies that we get back from the pharmaceutical companies, and it's not a lot, but we're, we took that and we combined it with the other towns and it's getting processed through the Northwest Cog and they work with Greenwood's, using, utilizing that money. Because what we had, it wouldn't make sense for us to
No, no, but they're, they are getting funding from the Northwest Cog also.
Yeah.
I mean.
So I mean, that's something to think about. I, I personally have kind of stayed with the five thousand and between that and what we're, they're getting with the ARPA funding. They should be good for
It should be, yeah.
A year or two.
Yeah.
It's definitely a service that gets utilized a lot. Morris residents, area residents. Highway Department, there's still price modification on this budget. So we just try, one that went up the most. We're still checking out the internet. I think we've seen some increases, most recently in their bills for internet, that's still through cable version. Electricity in all our departments, we did come up with seven point seven eight cents per kilowatt and we had gone, that was January first, we came up with that plan, went up to ten point three cents per kilowatt. So we're kind of monitoring how that's gonna affect the bills moving forward and we may have to make some adjustments, but I think the highway department's okay in that case. Garage maintenance up slightly, road maintenance up ten thousand. And you'll see the gas and diesel, at twenty thousand dollars, he's over budget right now. Now, July first, we're coming off of three dollars and thirty cents a gallon for diesel. We're gonna be down to two hundred, two ninety-two. And that's definitely gonna help. But I think the usage is up, and that's gas and diesel because that's, you know, the pickup truck, all the saws and things like that as far as gasoline. But we're gonna look at that number in the next week and see if, it definitely needs to go up for next year, even though the price of diesel for us will be down.
Was it a matter of it was underfunded or we just have a
It seems like
A lot of, that's a lot of money.
Well, you look at actual of the previous year, it was twenty-two thousand. So I think it was underfunded. I mentioned it last year that I, because I've been doing a five-year average on the usage of diesel, propane and gasoline for all departments. And I mentioned it was underfunded, but they felt they were, they were comfortable with that number. So I threw twenty-four thousand in there. I just want to see where we're gonna end up and have that for next week. Engineering, definitely using more and more engineering. That's for very small projects. Repairs and maintenance are going up. The cost just increasing significantly. That's why you see tires up. Blades, that's one set of blades a year. Sand and salt is gonna stay the same.
That's what the question is gonna be, and you know the question. We had a mild winter. So did, did we save any salt and sand from this year moving forward?
Well, he ordered, he hasn't used this whole budget yet this year and we're kind of saying, don't order anymore. Hopefully you won't need anymore because there may be some other overruns in this year's budget, like with the gasoline, that you're gonna have to move that salt and sand money too. But yeah, it's, it's difficult because, you know, you think you have a mild winter, but then you had all these ice events, you know, cold mornings after a wet night.
Yeah, and it's always, the storms always come on a weekend or
Yeah, fortunately, unfortunately for us, it was just some weekends and holidays, yeah. That's not me. It's the dog. Chip ceiling, the prices have exploded on that. Like for this current year, you had a hundred and three thousand dollars budgeted, and if he did all the roads that he thought he was gonna do, it'd be about a hundred and eighty thousand. So he's gonna have to cut back on the roads. Just the cost of material, we're looking at buying our own material right from OMG as far as the the chip itself, you know, the material. But still, the, the cost of materials for highways is incredible. And you'll see paving went up as well. I'm gonna meet with Kyle this coming week and we're probably gonna adjust these numbers. Next deal. I think that is about it. Oh, highway training, yeah, more training. No, let's stay the same. So we'll probably have some different numbers in highway for next week. He's gotta bring it around. Insurance liability, that's property casualty, work miss cop. And auto. And that should be the number for next year. We're in a free year agreement with our insurance company. Some of the lines go up a little bit, some lines come down, so we're kind of maintaining. Insurance.
All of a sudden, they go off, never go down.
Yeah, overall. Rural transit. Well, and that is Northwest Transit District. For many years, the request to town were not adequate to cover the requirement from the state to cover seventeen percent of the cost of the service. So see a bit of an increase there over the years. To, so all the member towns do meet that requirement from the state for the seventy percent. Computer replacement up five hundred dollars just because of the cost of equipment.
Should, should that be under? Are they replacing a computer, a computer?
We tried to do a couple a year.
That's what I'm saying. Should that be under capital?
It's kind of a, doesn't have much of a shelf life. You know, you're talking five, maybe eight years. So they're on a rotating basis. We're just continually doing that. Like this year, we're doing the registrar, which really needs it, and zoning. And Laurel's yours, gonna need it soon too.
Cranky.
And plus, we have to oh, what are they, is it the next system that's gonna be out in two years that each, the computers have to be able to be, that's the word.
Compatible?
Compatible, yeah. Some of the older machines are not, so yeah, great. But a lot of ours are in pretty good shape. I think I had a list of about six computers that need to be replaced in the next two years. And that was it. We're pretty good on tree removal. Fortunately, we've been doing well over the last number of years that we've kept up with it, where we're not in emergency stage where you have to hit a road because of all the dead ash on the side of the road. We've been really good at handling that, the highway crew has. Social Security maker and all that, it's nothing we can do anything with.
I don't think you're ever gonna get away from thirty thousand on tree removal.
Yeah.
It's just something that
We're fortunate.
You're gonna have to live with it.
Yeah. Just the maintenance fee. Yeah, nothing significant on civil division. Streetlights, I'm still looking at that. I want to make sure we have enough, given the change in energy costs and plus what the resources proposing, I think a nineteen percent increase in their part of it. Whitsfield County Dispatch, I do not have a firm number yet. They did have, I believe they had a meeting the other night. I'm waiting to hear your budget number, so I threw in twenty-nine thousand, just in case. The EMT outside service, that's for interlocal agreement. And yeah, for the agreement, we do a ninety-nine hundred eleven dollar capital expenditure or for their future ambulances, part of the contract with LVA, that's fifty-nine seven oh three to cover our town. Banton contract is fourteen thousand three twenty-nine for their service in town. And then staffing, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And staffing has gotten to be a real issue. It, it's costing more and more to maintain any staffing, you know, EMT world, they're like the underpaid, most underpaid people for what they do. It's amazing. And so the cost per hour went up probably an hour, an hour.
And that's gonna be another cost that is not gonna change. It's just gonna keep going up and up.
Yeah. And you'll see more regionalization with that.
Well, I'm amazed that Bethlehem still runs their ambulance service and
they get a lot of calls.
They do get a lot of calls.
Because of the facilities they have in town, which helps, you know. I don't know how they do it. Banton is, they're in a tough spot because they have a couple, two people that take a lot of the shifts there and they're up in age. Animal control, dog warden is part of a contract with Harmington. And Lori Howren, thought we should go up slightly on the dog license fees. It's not spelled correctly, is it?
Why is that?
Why isn't that spelled correctly or? I think just the increased cost for all the license, ordering licenses and all that paperwork.
Okay.
Building inspector. No real changes here. He keeps outperforming our guestimates. So we're have to continue to, you know, we put in, you'll see the increase in commissions up to twenty-seven thousand. Well, because he's generating so much revenue and permits and he gets a share of the total permit revenue, plus a twenty thousand dollar base payment. So the higher that number, the better because we're just keep bringing in more and more revenue. That's not due to a lot of building, it's due to the increased cost of building. So you'll see that gets covered on the revenue side pretty easily for the building inspector. Transfer station, not a big increase here and this is another reason why we want to kind of move forward with that ordinance about dumpsters for commercial businesses. Because we're holding the line on transfer station recycling, that covers all the tipping fees. And if we can reduce what the town is paying, we could see that number decrease as long as the tipping fees don't go up. So if we take how many tons out of what the town has to pay for and put it on those who generate it from their dumpsters. How many tons out of what the town has to pay for and put it on those who generate it from their dumpsters. That fee, that, that line I should go down for us, and we're gonna maintain it, make sure July first, we have that ordinance in place. And we should see some savings there. But, and again, tipping fees are only gonna go up. We've been fortunate, we're locked into a contract with a company called Covanta through twenty thirty-four, I believe. And so we won't see us, the jump that other towns are gonna be feeling pretty soon. And cost. Can see any other increases there? Just doing a good job down there, place is in good shape.
The only other way you get your, I mean, we do a lot of recycling. Nicest facilities around, that's recycling, and we talked about the food waste. That'll help, but I don't know what else there is that you could recycle to cut your costs down.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only other thing is if everyone recycled what they should be recycling.
I mean, there are clothing is another issue, I think they have, where you control. Scrap clothing and that's something that goodwill will take or something, that may help a little bit, but. I don't know what else would, you know, would do it, really.
I think more education, more awareness, maybe, maybe education, but awareness, you know, that, you know, there's so much more people could do and save them money. So I looked at a, I think for curbside pickup, just for the service. Not for the tonnage, just service of having your cans out there and getting them picked up. I think it was about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year for the town, that's based on eight hundred households. And so then you have to add in the cost of disposing. But you're still gonna need a transport station.
You still gonna need a transport station, no matter what.
Yeah, cause you're gonna have to take the bulky waste and the tires and the mattresses and everything else. Uh, senior center, I don't think there's too much here. Increase in internet, we're gonna check that as well, cause I think we're not even more following. Programs went up a thousand.
Trash removal. Special trips is new.
Yeah, and again, that's. That's the thing with Northwest Transit District, come to find out, you know, she, they'll utilize the transit bus. To do these special trips for the seniors and everything. All these years that I know of, we haven't been paying extra for that, and. The state found out and they said, no, that's an extra cost, you know, it's not part of what you pay for Northwest Transit for your town every year, that's an extra cost. So they came up, Northwest Transit came up with a three thousand dollars that they thought. Would cover us, and then we get a matching grant from the state for three thousand dollars. And that would cover all our trips, and one thing good about it, if we say at the end of the fiscal year, we have, you know, two thousand dollars left over. We can bank that for the next year, and if we feel we wanna reduce the cost, you know, the line item for next year, we can reduce it down. It's again where the towns were not paying what they're supposed to be paying due to the management at the time of Northwest Transit District. And she does utilize that quite a bit if she can for the seniors.
So where, how were they getting paid for previously?
The Transit District, that's a whole nother story, they were. Somehow absorbing it, but running in the red, and we're still in the red, we're inching our way out of it. We're probably, what's this, probably this time next year, they'll be running in the black and doing, doing well. But it's been a long crawl out of the hole for the Transit District. I would say they're still down probably a hundred some thousand dollars.
And these are totally separate from beach and red trips.
Yeah, yeah. And these are like little day trips, you know, go to the candle factory or, you know, something like that.
But specifically transportation, because the programs are also in here.
Right, yeah, we, we weren't paying for that transportation previously.
So special trips is really transportation, because programs would, could be a trip.
Well, if you're gonna use the Transit District Bus, it would be special trips.
Okay.
And I think that's what the Transit District calls it, special trips.
Okay.
Uh, there's a lot there, I'll have, I'll fill in the comment sections on these. Lines with the information that I have for next week, so you have a little more information, answer the questions. I don't think it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting budget year, cause with the reduction that we will be paying to the school system. I imagine the mill rate should go down, I think people expect it to go down, yeah. But you also wanna plan for the future and make sure you're funding your capital needs as well for the future. And I have a capital meeting either this week or early next week, and we'll come up with that budget after we're done with this part of it.
So will you have capital by the time we meet next Tuesday?
Not next Tuesday, I don't think, unless I can get Rob, if I can get them all together this week, I hope, which I hope, but.
But this will be all set to present to board of finance, that should be all set, and capital we could do later?
Yeah, well, this should be all set except for.
Yeah, sounds good.
Alright.
I know there's a lot to look at. All at once, but. Uh, any public comment? Anyone online? It is five forty-eight, wow, that's a record.
Did you just do that?
Thank you.